I'd like to welcome everybody to the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting. It is Monday, November 17th. The time is now 9:04. Everybody please stand for the pledge.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your liberty for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Denise, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Bledsoe, Ms. Riggin, Mr. King, Ms. Rest, and Mr. Steve Murphy.
We have no public hearings. Next, we have approval of amendments for November 3rd, 2014.
Second.
Have motion of second. Do we have any discussion? Denise, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bledsoe, Ms. Riggin, and Mr. King.
Yes. Have no presentations to the Commissioners. We'll move on to contracts or agreements for approval. First off, we have the holiday schedule for 2015.
I'd like to add that I'm surprised that we added New Year's Eve to the 2015 schedule.
That was on there from yet last year's adoption.
Well, just because it was on there. We've always closed.
Yeah, it's always been on the holiday schedule.
The one we adopted last year.
I saw it on last year, but it wasn't on the one we signed last year, so that's why I was surprised to see it. It would be New Year's Eve. It would be December 31st.
It was on last year's.
New Year's Eve's at the top of the list.
It's at the top, but it would be December is what I'm saying. I've just always felt if the banks were open, we should be open. And I don't mind closing maybe at noon or 1 o'clock, but...
Okay, the reason why it was on here, Sherri, because last year's New Year's Eve would have been the 31st of 2013. This year, it is right, because this year would be December 31st of 2014.
So it should have been down here. Anyway, go ahead.
I'll read for a break. I'll second. Denise, call the roll.
Ms. Riggin, Mr. Bledsoe, and Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we have amendment number two, agreement between owner and engineer for professional services.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is amendment number two for Bridge 159, which is located on Windsor Road over Prairie Creek. This amendment is necessary for permits, some redesign, and hydraulic analysis. The increase in the contract is $57,620. Keep in mind, we are with the redesign, we will be reducing construction limits. We assume we'll only be... Only two parcels will be affected for right-of-way, so we believe the cost will come down about $20,000 with that.
Like someone pointed that out to you, that it won't speed up the project though any.
Well, if things move smoothly, hopefully. I'm impressed on them. I'd like to go to construction next year if possible. It just depends on permitting and the right-of-way.
Will it be after the season?
Which season?
Your school season, fishing season.
There's a lot of seasons.
There's a lot of boats, because of that answer. Out of the last season.
It's a little early to say at this point, but...
We'll wait to hear from you.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll move to the door.
Second. Motion to approve and a second. Do we have any discussion? Denise, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bledsoe, Ms. Riggin, and Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we will do the insurance agreement with Anthem, and I will explain some of this. At one point in time, we were looking at around $4.2 million to do the insurance, which would almost double the insurance payments for the employees here. But after sitting and looking through a few things, I believe that we should be able to provide some insurance for our employees, some good insurance, after looking at Council's budget and a couple of other things. So the insurance will go up a little. We're looking, it's going to go up like a single employee. In 2014, the portion was $91.06. It looks like 2015, it'll go up to like $95.61. So, and I will say, in 2015, we will start looking at other adjustments that we can actually do to the plan also, to sort of help bring it down, but as of right now, that's what we're looking at on the insurance. So I would like to have a motion to approve and a second, if I could, to go ahead on this contract. Second. I'll second it.
James, do you have family and spouse?
Yeah. Family in 2014 was like $236.78. It's going to go to $248.61 in 2015.
And then spouse, we're not family, but just spouse?
It looks like $191.15 in 2014 to $271. These are per month. Okay.
It's around a 5% increase from last year. Nothing else has changed.
So are you going to sign this draft?
Do you have...
We're going to sit down today. We're still...
Yes.
Okay. And then can I have it stamped if you're not here?
Yes.
Okay.
Or you can sign the draft and stamp the version, whatever.
I'll just mount it at the app. Okay, that'll be good.
Denise, can you call the roll, please?
Oh, sure. Ms. Riggin?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes. Okay, we don't have any more contracts or agreements for approval. We'll move on to appointments. We have common wage hearing appointments for energy savings. Angie, did you...
Yes, I attended a scoping meeting last Friday. Amoresco updated different department heads, so they know what to expect during construction, and part of the process is we need to set a wage scale. So they asked that I coordinate that. We need three people appointed to the committee, two already established by state. I'm happy to be on that if you'd like me to, or...
I nominated Angie Moyer, Shane Slaven, and Chris McCammon.
I'll second them.
We have a motion and a second for approval for Angie Moyer, Shane Slaven, and Chris McCammon to be on the common wage hearing appointments. Denise, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Riggin?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes. For appointments, we have no table of business. We'll move on to ordinance for second reading. We have 2014-024 Delaware County Emergency Medical Service Fee Structure and Billing. Jason.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Rogers, Emergency Management Director. Made a couple of reviews for you, revised Amendment A on page seven of nine on Exhibit A, where it says Delaware County is not insurance, Delaware County is a yearly, and then we added the word yearly, membership program. And for clarity's sake, in Section A, we also wrote all residents of Delaware County and students of Ball State University are eligible to participate, just for clarity's sake.
Did you bring in that day the copy?
Yeah, I believe you have it.
I didn't get a chance to get it for me.
Those are the only changes that we had.
And there was one other item, just for clarity, on page two of nine, section two, item F, for specialty care transport. We identified what specialty care transport is. Specialty care is defined as interhospital transfers of care hazardous material cases or high-risk transport services. Before that, we didn't have that definition in there, but those are the only changes.
I'll move for second reading of 2014-024.
I'll second them.
A motion for approval and a second. Discussion. Denise, call the roll, please.
Ms. Riggin?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes. Next, we have 2014-025 establishing Delaware County Sheriff's Jack Grant Account.
Motion to...
Make a motion to approve. Second. Motion to approve and a second. Discussion. Denise, call the roll.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Riggin?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes. Next, we have 2014-027A, increasing Delaware County Board of Health Permit Fees.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Discussion. Denise, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Riggin?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes. Next, we have ordinances for our first reading. We have 2014, I believe, 029. Delaware County Emergency Medical Service Med Stat Off-Road Ambulance Grant. Jason.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, we have received a $65,000 grant for a med stat vehicle. What it is, and it was highlighted in EMS World, but essentially, it's an ATV ambulance for special events. Since we do so many special events, it has all the features of an ambulance at about half the cost, but this was a grant from the Ball Brothers Foundation that they approved at the end of this year for the purchase of this for all the special events in Delaware County. We already have the check in hand, so if it pleads for you to suspend the rules so we can order this, that would be fantastic.
I'll move for introduction, 2014-029.
Second.
Have motion for introduction of ordinance 2014-029. Any discussion? Denise, call the roll, please.
Ms. Riggin?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes.
For suspension of the rules for 2014-029.
Second.
Have a motion to suspend the rules and a second. Denise, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Riggin?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes.
And move for approval of 2014-029.
Second.
Have motion to approve with a second on 2014-029. Denise, call the roll, please.
Ms. Riggin?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes. We have no resolutions for approval. We'll move on to department head and elected officials. Jason, you would like to talk about the agreement with Ball?
Yes, and I just received an email that they have an updated draft, so if we want to table that to look at the new draft, we certainly can. I don't believe there were any changes, but I've not seen it yet, so I may hold that until the next meeting.
Have you got anything on that, Steve, or...
No, I've not seen it. Maybe Sean has, but maybe when Jason gets the new one, get it to me and put it on the agenda for December.
Yep, sounds good.
And then I... Go ahead. The only other thing I've got is the write-offs for month-end report for October. And Denise, you've got those figures correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'll read them off here. Our total charges for month-end from 10/1 to 10/31, $581,519.22, with our write-offs Total balance forward is $855,261.76, so I'll ask that you approve the write-off fee, and it is itemized in the monthly report from Med Bill, and I'll provide copies for you.
I'll move for approval of stage.
Second.
Have motion and a second. Question over this. Denise, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Riggin?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes.
Thank you.
Have any other department heads who would like to get up and speak? Morning, Chris.
Hi. I have here an updated paving list, where we're at on our paving and what we've done. Kind of suspended right now because of the weather.
You have faith that we might start back?
Well, we...
I hope you can get 990.
Yes, I need a copy.
Oh, I'm sorry. It shows that at the bottom, it shows we're 21.4, that's road miles, that's 21. But really, you guys have been around long enough to know that it's over 16.8 inches. It's a two-pass road, so that, for instance, like wheeling, that says 2.6 miles. In reality, that's a two-pass road, so that's five mile, lane mile, really. You folks know that. So anyway, we're right at Jones Road right now, and busy changing our trucks over the day, having our spreaders and sanders put on because it's going to get cooler to see if we want to have the roads getting pretreated, that sort of thing.
What, did you go out this morning early?
Yeah.
What time are you out?
About 6:00. Yeah, Town Road, 400 East, up around Smithfield, that's pretty slick.
I had some complaints on the wheeling and walnut again.
So anyway, we're going to... We have 10 trucks out now, and we'll have them all treated for the city this afternoon. Okay?
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
We'll move on down to payment of claims in amount of $1,574,36.53.
Both payment of claims.
Second there.
Have a motion for payment and a second. Denise, call the roll, please.
Ms. Riggin?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes. We'll end with, do we have any questions, comments, anything from the public?
Hello, my name's Tom Terry. I've been up here before, and I thought I would not be standing before you again, but it has been brought to my attention that one of the Commissioners has taken me up on my challenge. The Commissioner spoke to a local political group and said that I did not understand the facts of the 2012 assessment contract, that I was wrong with my conclusions of irregularities in this contract. I stand before you today, that was really too late, because I only gave two weeks for someone to challenge me, so I could pay that $10,000, but I stand before you today, and I raised my challenge to $50,000. And I will keep raising it until someone looks at the evidence. Before, I just made some allegations and so forth, but today, I'm doing it a little bit different. I'm actually going to hand out packets of the evidence. And if you don't want to look at the evidence at home and at your office, don't take it.
Are you saying that something illegally has happened here?
What I am saying, I contend that on the... At October 1st, 2012, the Commissioners' meeting for Delaware County Assessor lied about not knowing why the Department of Local Government Finance changed the contract from five years to two years. I also contend that the comment from the Assessor saying no other changes are made to this contract except some in but or corrections was also a lie. The main purpose of this contract, cyclical reassessment, was deleted. Take a look. You've got the proof. The original contract was for $379,054.76. This was really for six years, which included cyclical reassessment at a cost of approximately $200.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
What we will do, we'll have our attorney look at it, okay? And then he can get back to us.
We'll do that.
And then if it's... Listen to me. If it's anything illegal or anything like that, then we will forward on to the proper people.
And would you...
Okay?
When you read this, you have questions, please contact me. I've got an email address, a phone number.
We will have him take a look at it. All right. Thank you, Mr. Terry. Have a motion two weeks' advance?
So moved.
I have a concern. As a taxpayer and also as an employee of Delaware County, I have a concern about no security at the front door of the county building. The bus station, they have closed their restrooms off years before because people, drug dealers, whatever, would go in and shoot up in the restrooms. And so that's why I was told their restrooms are closed to the public. And I have a concern, I mean, I know before 9/11, there was no security in this building. I understand that. But we also know that there's copycat killers out there. The world's a lot different than it was even five years ago. Delaware County is very high on the counties of Indiana with meth. They rage, they, I mean, they're, they get mad. You can't reason with them. We have people that come into the county building to go to courts, and that I fear that something's going to happen to the employees of Delaware County. And I mean, I'm not against the Commissioners, I'm not against County Council. I know the budget has to be cut. Believe me, I've lived through that for the last five years, but I also am concerned that especially the Treasurer's Office, it's not going to be nothing for someone to come in and rob them. And the way people are these days, they can shoot a whole bunch of us, and no one's going to have time. I mean, I told my husband last night, I said, you know, I'm going to talk to the Auditor's Office, and I'm going to make a plan, because we can go back in the vault, there's no windows back there. And I know that might sound stupid, silly, whatever, but I stand before you, and I ask for consideration of something to be done to protect us in the county building. This morning, we came in at 15 after 8:00, we couldn't get in the building. My sister had a key to the building, so she was able to unlock it, but people came into the Auditor's Office and had been standing out in the cold, because they don't have key fobs, and they don't have keys to the door, and the front door is locked. And so I just, you know, I'm not mad at anybody, and I hope nobody is mad at me because I said this, but I just really fear for our safety in the county building.
Well, Denise, that's... You said, I hope you don't think this is dumb. That's smart. Every office in this building should have a contingency plan on what to do. Not only should you have that plan, you should get ahold of the Sheriff's Department and ask them to send over to help you develop what that plan should be, okay? So that's smart to do that. And it is risky to have that third floor, you know, that's a couple days a week, but we're leaving the other two floors open, and I'm concerned about that too, very much so. But get ahold of the Sheriff's Department, they will help any office develop a plan to, for an active shooter.
Jason didn't... Jason, would you like to speak? Jason, well, you had kind of started and then you, but need to expand a little bit more, man.
We, Emergency Management Office, two years ago, I think it was, developed a county building safety video, and we left that with HR to disperse, or at least to be viewed in their office. We need to make some more CDs available, I'm certain, if we possibly can.
And I agree, Jason, you did do that. Jeff and I were characters in that play or act out, and I agree that you did do that, but at that time, the act was played out with security at the front door.
Exactly.
So, you know, we need a new plan of action or something, because that would basically be outdated, I believe.
And that's a good point, Denise. However, at that, at the time that we did that, we did not include security doing building clearing, so it was, it was...
I believe they were taken out more.
Yes.
They were taken out.
Yeah, so, and I understand your concerns. There's been lots of phone calls and lots of discussions about how to solve this issue, and I think that there are some ideas on the floor with some possibilities to keeping some security around here, whether it be a roving security officer or something along those lines. And I don't want to speak out of turn, I think it would be better for the Sheriff to address this, because those are his people.
That's what I was going to say. It would be better for the Sheriff to address the security issues down there. I know he brought it up during budget hearings, but I believe Sherri, you said something about this morning, too, you would like to check into it.
Well, I'm trying to find some...
So maybe, maybe you can get with the Sheriff and discuss this, and bring it back and find out before we go.
And we are worried about security at night. It's brought, been brought to my attention, you know. Do we have to really even meet here at the courthouse? Can we not meet, you know, other buildings that do have security?
Mike Jones, Delaware County Council, 1205 North Panhandle, 650 East. We discussed, as everybody knows, security bailiffs at the front door, and there were part-time security bailiffs provided for as far as money in the budget. Now, without casting any stones, and I don't mean to do that sincerely, nobody had ever broached the County Council about removing security bailiffs from the front doors, period. That was not discussed. Now, having said that, without being mean-hearted at all, I think the decision to remove them was a little premature. I think there needed to be some discussion prior to that. There is a meeting that is in the stages of being scheduled, and Sherri, if you would like to attend, I'd be glad to have participation. And I think this issue can become an on-issue, and it can be, and I think you'll see security back down on the doors. Again, that's not Council's decision, that's Commissioners and the Sheriff's, but I think that can be discussed and fixed. That's my opinion. And to your comments, Denise, I think they're very appropriate, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
I'm Bob Schreier, 7110 Centennial. I'm speaking in favor of the security at the front door, too. Over the years, I've been to the county building several times, and a lot of times, 8:30 in the morning, when the workers are coming in, too. A few years ago, the United States had a big trouble with their postal systems. In other words, one employee was shooting another employee while at work. And as of now, all the employees walk through between the two metal detectors without ever carrying anything they want to carry. I think that that, that the employees maybe do not need to be taken through that every day. There's, they're talking about reserves training for the police department. I think that possibly the Sheriff randomly could have the reserves come out and be trained for security uses, and just take the workers and run them through occasionally, randomly, so that we'll keep an eye on that, too. My sister, she worked in Florida for a company for about 25 years, and got up in the office where she was part of the office management, but also was the first person that any of the employees or customers came in to speak to her. but also was the first person that any of the employees or customers came in to speak to her. She had invested about $100,000 of her retirement pay. And all of a sudden, one day, she found out that if she gave the company $200, that they would give her $1,200. That was all she got out of her retirement. I feel that due to the fiscal problems that the county has got now, we're going to have some major upset employees either being laid off or lose benefits or something. And she carried a gun every day in her pocket just to ward off whatever employee would come in that was be possibly intoxicated or high on something or whatnot, or very upset with the management, just to head them off. So it's something that we've got to look at that a way, too. The other comment that I have, I hate to see it, but, or think about it, but there's, the county has spent a half a million dollars to build a driveway right up next to the courthouse. And that's basically, I foresaw it, is for somebody like Timothy McVeigh to come and set a truck with explosives in it. We used to have a lot of distance between the county building and the street, but now they can get right up to it. But thank you for your time.
Do you have a moment, Sherri, and get with the sheriff?
I don't know who he's going with.
So we have a motion and second to recess. Denise, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes.